All right, good evening, everyone. I show that it is six o'clock. With that, we will take roll call.
Kristen and Stephen are not here.
We do have a quorum, so we will call the Wabash City School Board meeting for Monday, June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Would everybody please stand? Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin each Wabash City School Board meeting by reading the Wabash City Schools' mission. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in the global community. I'd welcome everybody here tonight. Do we have any recognitions?
Not tonight.
No recognitions. We do have some revisions to the agenda. G seven and eight and items L through N. So G seven is approve the following transfers for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Zach Winrich from Wabash Middle School Eighth Grade Social Studies to Wabash Middle School Seventh Grade Social Studies. And Aaron Sapusik from Wabash High School English to Wabash Middle School Eighth Grade Social Studies. And then items, item L is approved Samantha Summers to work the two thousand and twenty-three summer food service program at her hourly rate. Item M is accept the resignation of Jessica Fishback as Wabash Middle School Guidance Secretary effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item N is the board will hear first reading of the following policies, investment policy and rainy day fund policy. And then item O is approve recommendation to keep lunch prices the same for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Two dollars and eighty cents for elementary, two dollars ninety cents for Wabash Middle School, Wabash High School, four dollars sixty cents for staff lunches, fifty cents for extra milk and free breakfast. But accept a motion on the revisions to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of approving the revisions to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is revised. At this point, if there are any audience members that would like to comment on an agenda item, please let us know and we'll make sure you have the opportunity. All right, hearing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. We have minutes of our June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Claims, donations, we do have financials at this meeting, so I would accept a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
So I will share our May financial information. So when you look at our revenue, our revenue was higher than what we actually projected for the month. However, our expenses were also higher than projected. In our accounts payable expenses, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar payment to Hagerman for the water damage at OJ. We also had some HVAC and boiler repairs and some freezer repairs. And then for the month of May, payroll was a little bit higher due to a few factors. The second pay of May, we had special ed stipends. In the past, we always paid those out one time at the beginning of the year, and this year we did divide it up. That way, special ed teachers would get credit if their course load or their caseload changed. So that was one of the stipends, and then we also had some continuing education reimbursements. And we also noticed that with it being the end of the school year, our sub-costs for the month of May was a little bit higher than what we normally have. So overall, we were projected to have a net loss of about sixteen thousand, and we actually ended up being a net loss of about sixty-four thousand. I will say that many of our cost savings measures that we have implemented will go into effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So as we finish out this year, we believe that we will see this start going into net incomes each month.
So those additional expenditures that we weren't anticipating should not affect the long-term projection of the year?
No.
Okay. Sub-cost higher than normal in May, I assume, or normal than other months, I assume that's typical in May?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at Wabash City Hall, two oh two South Wabash Street, Wabash, Indiana, at six P M. We have a few items of communications. There is no old business. New business, approve the Wabash City Schools' return to learn plan for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, discussion.
We are required to update our return to learn plan every six months, and this is actually the last time that we will have to do this because that requirement ends on September thirtieth of this year. And there are no changes from our update in December of two thousand and twenty-two.
All those in favor of approving the plan indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, approve the attached bid for trash removal as approved by the N I E S C board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Okay, so our trash bid goes out through, it's the Northern Indiana Education Service Center. And they send it out for the whole region. Anyone who wants to participate, there was like twenty-five school corporations that participated in this, so we don't have to do it ourselves. And we only had one person bid on us, which is the Republic Service here in Wabash. They went through the service center, so the service center board has approved that, but they asked that all of our boards approve it also. So that's why we're asking you to approve it. It's already been approved by their board. The last time, two years ago, we agreed to a small increase and not to rebid it because it was right after COVID. So this is really the first time we've bid it in four years. And it went up a little bit, but not terrible. So it was a good bid. They, I mean, I guess they didn't know they were gonna be the only ones, but it was still a good bid. So I would recommend you approve it, and that'll be for two years.
So we typically go through the North?
We do. We go through them to do our trash bids, yeah. Because they do, they do all the work and get all the different companies coming and bid on all the schools.
So how do they select which ones? I mean?
We select. So if we would have had more than one person bid on us, I would go through and score both of them and select who we want.
So they put it out, and whoever wants to bid on these, bid on them, and then we get to choose.
And then we, we have a day where we all have to either Zoom with them or go there, and we get the, the results. Well, our result was one company, so. But last time, four years ago, we did have two companies bid on us, and Republic got our, our bid, and so that's who bid on us.
All right. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, approve the following changes to the support personnel handbook effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Remove transportation director position and add two transportation assistant positions at seven thousand dollars each.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, discussion.
With the departure of our Director of Transportation earlier this year, we've decided not to replace that position. Instead, we'll divvy up some of these duties. Mr. Stone will take on a portion, including bus safety and driver professional development. The transportation assistants will do routing, field trip scheduling, and working with families on transportation changes and issues. These two assistants will learn all of these duties. In case one of them might be out for one reason or another, we're still able to handle all of our transportation needs.
So the, the two assistants, that's approximately fourteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
What's the savings by? The estimated savings?
Yeah.
She was, yeah, I would say the savings is over fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Are we, with the two assistants, are we give it like a A to, A to D, I mean, A to M, and then N to Z families get?
Well, one's, one's gonna do the routing.
Okay.
And then the other one will handle field trips and, and working with parents.
Okay.
But like I said, they're gonna learn both. That way, if one would be out on vacation and we have a new kid come in, we know how to, we'll be able to get them, get them routed.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the changes to the support personnel handbook indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, approve the following as transportation assistants, Melissa Callahan and Kendy Kugler.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, discussion.
Mrs. Callahan and Mrs. Kugler will be doing the duties that we just mentioned. Mrs. Kugler really stepped in this past spring, as did Mr. Vale, to help us finish out the school year without the Director of Transportation. And we appreciate both Mrs. Callahan and Mrs. Kugler's willingness to take on these new responsibilities.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approve recommendation to eliminate the following positions for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Behavioral interventionist at OJ Neighbors, part-time lunch aide at OJ Neighbors.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, we have discussion.
The behavior interventionist was an ESAR-funded position. With the elimination of this position, this does take OJ down to one behavior interventionist. The funds for this position will be able to be used for another position for the coming school year. And we do wanna remind, remind everybody that all of the positions that were added with ESAR funds, so like the, the behavior interventionists, those will only be funded for the coming school year, and at that point, we will need to eliminate those positions. When we get to that point, we will carefully examine where we are financially and determine if we have the means to keep any of these positions.
Knowing that we added a number of these behavior interventionist positions due to ESAR funds being made available and what those funds could be used for. They help a lot with behavior intervention at OJ specifically, and we don't have a assistant principal there. How do we plan to provide the support needed when we have one less person there?
I feel like we've got three title teachers at, at OJ, and we are looking at developing a plan for using them to assist. One of those will go away, though, when ESAR is, is gone too, so. But that's really the plan, is how do we utilize the title positions to, to help support not only academics but behavior.
So that's a work in progress.
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion?
Those are my questions.
Good question.
Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, approve recommendation to cancel the following teaching contracts. Jeff Maslin, seventh grade social studies, Tisha Lynn, fifth grade.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
The cancellation of these two contracts are part of our cost savings plan. We have teachers within the district who have the appropriate licensure that will move into these position, which helps to right-size our staffing. Both of these teachers were provided with due process as required by the law, and it's my recommendation that the board cancel these two contracts effective immediately.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G, approve the following transfers for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Kristen Mattern at OJ Neighbors from Project Lead the Way to third grade. Erica Farmer at OJ Neighbors from fourth grade D L I to Project Lead the Way. Wendy Hicks at OJ Neighbors from first grade to fourth grade D L I. Jenny Baker from art teacher at OJ Neighbors to fifth grade D L I English and sixth grade civics at Wabash Middle School. Abby Arwood at L H Carpenter from preschool teacher to kindergarten teacher. Zach Winrich from Wabash Middle School Eighth Grade Social Studies to Wabash Middle School Seventh Grade Social Studies. And Aaron Sapusik from Wabash High School English to Wabash Middle School Eighth Grade Social Studies.
So moved.
Motion second, discussion.
There's a saying that for schools to improve, you must have the right people on the bus, and I always take it as a step further is that not only do you have to have the right people on the bus, you also have to have them in the right seat. So we have looked at our staffing both through a cost savings lens and also through a lens of what's best for our kids. And we feel that these transfers will be beneficial to both our bottom line but also for our students and our buildings. And we really appreciate the flexibility of these staff members, and we hope they enjoy their new roles.
All right. All those in favor of approving the transfers indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item H, approve hiring the following certified staff, Lynn Key Faber as art teacher at OJ Neighbors at a salary of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars beginning the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Mrs. Key Faber is a Wabash resident. She lives right around the corner from, from OJ. We are really excited to have her take over the, the art program at OJ. We know that our students will leave elementary with a solid foundation in art. Also wanna remind, we do have a grant that was provided for last year and, at a minimum, the next two years that we pay the, the teaching para rate for Mrs. Key Faber, and anything above that, the grant covers.
Is she a certified art teacher?
Yes, she, and she comes highly recommended.
Okay. How many years of experience does she have? Do you know?
Was it nineteen? Yeah, it's close to twenty.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so she's been around the block.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of approving the hiring indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item I, approve the following handbooks for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. L H Carpenter, OJ Neighbors, Wabash Middle School and Wabash High School.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, discussion.
I am gonna let each of our administrators kinda go do a quick review of changes and updates to their handbook. We'll start with L H.
For L H, page four, I just changed our goals. I have to put that in our handbook to pass the ball, because I set new goals each year, so I just include that in my handbook. So I listed on your document the new goals that we're doing. Page six, what Wabash City Schools offers at L H Carpenter. Because we are adding full-day classrooms on the three-year-old end, I included that, and all of the three-year-olds will be inclusion, so that we don't have any more self-contained developmental related special ed classrooms. All of our special need students are now all included in every classroom. So those are all inclusion, three-year-old preschool classrooms, full day. We still do offer a half-day A M. only, and we have about four that did request half-days A M. Three of them are gen ed, and some of them are special ed, so they're just doing half-day. I think that's really the major, the major one in that one. Page seven, I updated the hours because with us doing away with the half-day and the three-year-olds, they're now full-day classrooms. So I updated those hours. And page fourteen, I love Mrs. Wright. She is now taking back over the tuition, which is a cost savings to me because I had to pay a thousand dollars for smart care to do the tuition for software. So she is taking that back over. So in the handbook, I needed to put in how tuition will be paid versus through a smart care app. They're now going to go through Skyward and pay that bill now with her. We're, we're, we're still working together. We're still doing a monthly fee, the minimum. And she's gonna keep track of it, but we're on backup if, if I need to make some phone calls for her. Because I said, it will be needed, so to get those bills paid, but very thankful for her stepping back up and taking that. She had more time with the textbooks fees being changed from the state level. So on that back page, you'll see just the fees prices that we're doing. That's all my changes. Short and sweet.
For OJ, we just updated the cover page with the new school year, and we added, along with Wabash City School Mission, OJ's mission and vision statements that we came up with in our P L Cs this year. Went ahead and added those, and then on page two, where it's a, it's a welcome to the families. I just revised that a little bit to add our collective commitment statement that we also came up with in our P L Cs this year. So just added those new components to it. And then on pages six and seven, for the attendance, we revised it to reflect what every other school has. So we're all in the same aligned absence policy, absence policies, and that's all the changes.
Well, for, I'll speak for the middle school because Jen's not here, and I don't know where Mr. Mattern's at. They're probably on some tropical island. But a lot of the changes that the middle school and the high school did are getting the handbooks compatible, or in other words, equal. Their attendance policy is now the same as the high school's in its policy. The changes because of the day reporting program, their changes are relatively the same as ours. Couple of discipline things, dress code in the middle school is now the same as the high school. We wanted to, to begin working this year on getting our handbooks as closely as possible, being together so that when those students have that transition, there's not this one rule that stands out that, you know, all of a sudden we're having trouble with freshmen because for the last three years, they were allowed to do this, and now they can't do it. So Jen and I worked rather hard the, the, the last month, month and a half of the school year to, to get things together. And so very happy with, with the way that's going and the collaboration that we're having on that. For the high school itself, we like to welcome Mr. Stone back to the high school handbook. Made sure we got that on there, but really, a lot of our changes are just due to the growing, you know, a handbook is a living document. It, it grows, it changes, it reverts. Every year, there's always something a little bit different, and not only do you have to, to go with the flows of, of society, but at times you have to go with the flow of, of what your teaching staff and, and other administrative staff wants. And so what we did this year for our changes was we met with our lead teaching team and had them come up with really what changes they want and what changes, what things do they see in the classroom that drastically affects the teaching environment for them. And the, the one thing that, the number one thing that came up was, was cell phones. Now, in the past, we've always had that cell phones where it's a discretion of the teacher. If, if the teacher wanted them to have it or would allow them to have it, so be it. It was that classroom. What we've run into a lot is, well, this teacher lets me have it, why can't I have it? You know, that sort of thing, and so the teachers all agreed that cell phones in the classroom are, are a big no-no. Now, we're, we're not going to make them lock them up during the day. They can have them out in the hallways. They can have it lunch before and after school. But when you go into that classroom, it either needs to be put into a sleeve, the teacher has a basket, however they want to put it in, but it's not gonna be allowed out. And so hopefully, that will eliminate some of that distraction that goes on. The other big thing that the teachers wanted in revolving, or in regards to dress code, they wanted to bring back no spaghetti straps, and then also add into that their crop tops, which, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll go with it. The big thing for attendance for both the middle school and the high school, we, we've changed things. And parents, students, however you wanna look at it, parents are allowed, student is allowed ten parental excuse days a year. These are, the parent is calling in, saying, hey, my kid's sick. I'm not taking him to the doctor. You know, those sorts of things. So there, there, we always have, there's always a kid who, who can't get the driver's license because you can't take your driver's license unless it's during the school day, during the hours. They don't do it on Saturdays. They, they don't do it past three o'clock, four o'clock, you know, so we always have kids who are having it, this is one of those days. Now, when you hit that tenth day, that's it. Now our discipline is gonna start. Everything's gonna kick in, and we're gonna hold forward with things the way they are. Really, other big changes, we've got some qualifications put in for field trips. Really didn't think it was appropriate that kids stay on a class because on a field trip. So we, we put some, some guidelines in there on that. And then really, most, everything else has to do with the changes in the day reporting program, and that's just simple paperwork changes that we've had to do. So looking forward to next year. I think we've got a good thing going at, at the middle school and the high school. And as we begin to work to come up with a work with two handbooks that, that begin to be identical in a lot of different ways, we can begin to really view that facility as one building and really move forward in that, that mindset, that frame. So looking forward to it.
I have a question.
Questions?
The update to the dress code, do you let them, I know they get a, you know, access to the handbook, but I'm guessing that they aren't gonna go in there. Will you, is there a way to let them know that, hey, no longer will we do this?
And we actually do this twice a year now. Within the first two, three days of school, we're gonna have class meetings where we're gonna meet with the kids as a class as a whole. So we'll meet with freshmen and seniors and the juniors and, and sophomores during that lunch advisory time over the course of two days. And we will go through, first of all, all the changes that we had in the handbook so that they're well aware of them. We'll also politicize those out through the advisory classes. And then we'll go over other things that they need to know in the handbook that are important. But we always address those changes right off the bat. And then second, when second semester starts, we have the same class meetings just to review things because apparently, over the course of two weeks of Christmas, a lot of people forget how to use this. So yes, those are, those are all highlighted. And now with the, the way that we're running announcements and notifications on the T Vs, we can have those changes up on those as well the first couple of weeks of school.
Because I'm guessing there is gonna be some kids show up with crop top on the first day, so.
There will be, yeah, and really, the, the first two or three days, you know, they kinda get a little leeway. We've got the, the file drawers full of T-shirts, and we've got clothes in, in the closets, so. We'll work with them. We're not going after anybody. You know, I, dress codes are a very difficult thing for me because inherently, they are biased. No matter how you do it, they're biased towards one gender over another. And trying to keep things equal and, and keep things fair can be very difficult. So we try to get a little leeway in the beginning as everybody's running.
I appreciate the changes.
I have a different question.
Yes.
Under field trips, what's been added says, Wabash High School also recognizes that behavior and classroom performance supersede any activity that removes students from the classroom. A student must be passing all classes in order to be considered eligible for attending any field trip or outside of school activity. Additionally, they must have an attendance rate of ninety-four percent in Skyward at the time of the field trip activity, and fewer than five disciplinary referrals to be eligible for field trip activity. So we are saying that they must be passing all classes at the time of the field trip, and they must have a ninety. Okay, it doesn't say five classes. It says all, or at least what I'm reading, because that's where I was going. Athletics is five.
Athletics is five, right.
And I don't think we have a attendance rate requirement for athletics.
No, we do not.
So field trips is educational in nature, and we're being more stringent according to the policy, the way it's written, than we are for athletics. That seems counterintuitive to me.
It was supposed to be five.
And, and I agree, we need to have students attending school. But I, but again, if we don't have that requirement of students to be able to participate in athletics, I don't know that we should exclude a student from a field trip. It seems a little counter- It seems a little counterintuitive to me for what our purposes are as an educational institution.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see everybody be able to attend a field trip.
And we can.
I have no problem with it. I have no problem with the discipline.
Policy of the board, we can, we can take that out. We can look to revise it and come back with you later with, with a revised policy.
I would like us to look at that. Like I said, I'm not opposed to having some issues in there from a disciplinary. And, and you know, if we have disciplinary issues, I totally agree that that needs to be taken into consideration. I just feel that the way this is written is more stringent than what we have requirements for athletics. And I don't think that should be the case.
Well, what we'll do then is I would recommend that you accept the changes for the high school as is, excluding this particular revision. And then we'll look to revise this and come back at you. I will later date the fall to get an approval for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
Anybody else? Thank you for the work that you guys put in today. Because I know going over handbooks and policies are, it's not exciting things to do. So thank you for the time put in on that. So with that, I would accept a motion to approve the, all of the handbooks as is, except for the high school, with the exception to the high school of the field trip policy that will be reviewed at a later time.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Having a motion second. All those in favor of approving the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item J, approve the attached two-year contract for Sarah Delgado as Director of Global Citizenship.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Sarah's contract looks a little bit different this year. She has two young children, and she has requested to work part-time. She will continue to be a shared employee between Wabash City Schools and the mayor's office. She will work two days a week. For us, she will continue to work with our DLI program, including securing teachers when we need them and also providing classroom coaching support to our DLI teachers that are from other countries. She will also continue the student exchange work, which has really begun to grow post-COVID.
Any other, any discussion?
She reports directly to you.
Yes.
Any other questions? This is, so she's going part-time, from full-time to part-time?
Yes.
All those in favor of approving the contract indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item K, approve FMLA leave for employee number six eight nine six from August fourth through October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
I recommend that the board approve this FMLA request.
All those in favor of approving the request indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item L, approve Samantha Summers to work the 2023 summer food service program at her hourly rate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Ms. Summers was hired at our last board meeting as the cafeteria delivery truck driver. Mrs. Honeycutt would also like her to work during the summer, and we appreciate Ms. Summers' willingness to support our summer food service program.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item M, accept resignation of Jessica Fishback as Wabash Middle School Guidance Secretary effective July first, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Ms. Fishback has taken a position with the neighboring school district. We wish her the best of luck. We will need to replace this position because we did not replace Kristi Hudson when she retired. So it leaves nobody in the middle school office.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item N, the board will hear first reading of the following policies. The investment policy and the rainy day policy. So.
So moved.
Second.
Second reading of investment, investment of corporation funds. Policy six zero zero one, investment of corporation funds. The board authorizes the superintendent and/or chief financial officer, CFO, to make investments of available monies from the several funds of the corporation and, one, bonds, bills, or notes of the United States. Obligations, the principal and interest of which are fully guaranteed by the United States or obligations of the state. Two, certificates of deposit issued by a state or national bank organized and authorized to operate a bank in this state. Three, any other financial instrument authorized by Indiana laws. Interest derived from an investment shall be deposited in the fund from which the investment was made, except as otherwise permitted by law and directed by the board. The objectives and prior, priority order of the investment program are, one, the safety of principal and funds. Two, the liquidity of the portfolio sufficient to enable the corporation to meet all cash flow and other operational requirements. And three, the attainment of the highest rate of return through fiscal and economic cycles within the boundaries of statutory constraints, cash flow requirements, and the primary objects of safety and liquidity. Whenever there occurs a cash balance in any active fund which throughout, which though allocated to a specific use is temporary, temporarily not needed, the balance will be invested temporarily in the best advantage of Wabash City Schools in such securities as are permitted by law. Investment guidelines, deposit accounts. The superintendent and/or CFO may deposit funds only with the financial institutions designated by the State Board of Finance as depositories and by the local Board of Finance. Certificate of deposits. Investments of this type will be made based on quotes obtained from depositories designated for the corporation's geographical area. Maturity. Investments must have a stated maturity of not more than two years. Repurchase agreements. The superintendent and/or CFO is permitted to enter into repurchase agreements with designated depositories. In general, the collateral securities are restricted to interest-bearing obligations issued or fully insured or guaranteed by the United States. The collateral involved is not subject to the two-year maturity limitation. The treasurer shall prepare a monthly report summarizing the investment activities that occurred during the previous month. Legal reference, Indiana Code Statutory five dash thirteen dash eight dash one, five dash thirteen dash nine. Date adopted June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And then the rainy day fund policy. Policy six zero zero three rainy day fund. The board has established a rainy day fund. The rainy day fund may receive transfers of unused and unencumbered monies from other funds for any fiscal year. Such transfer cannot exceed ten percent of Wabash City Schools' total budget for the fiscal year from which the transfer occurs. Transfers to the rainy day fund may be made at any time during the fiscal year. The intent of the board is to use the monies in the rainy day fund only for any one of the following purposes. Emergencies, non-recurring expenditures, or other purposes deemed irrelevant for school operations by the board at the time the appropriation is made from the rainy day fund. The rainy day fund is subject to the same appropriation process as are the other corporation funds. Prior to the appropriation, the board will make a determination that the use of the appropriation is consistent with the intent of the rainy day fund as set out in this policy. The purpose for the appropriation will be stated at the time the board makes its determin, determination. Transfers from the rainy day fund to the education fund or the operations fund may be made at any time by resolution duly adopted by the board. Legal reference, Indiana Code Statutory thirty-six dash one dash eight dash five, thirty-six dash one dash eight dash five point one. Date adopted June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So we're not approving them? We're just?
We have to have two readings before we can approve. So this, tonight was the first reading of those policies. We will come back at the next board meeting. I'll get to read them again, and then we can.
I think Jordan said you didn't have to read them the second time. Yeah.
So we will bring them to this, to the July seventeenth meeting.
I just wondered why it said today's date for a doctor.
Yes, we will have to change that. Yes, yes. And so as we continue to improve our financial situation, it's important to have clear guidelines on how we manage our money. These policies will provide us with guidance on how to invest our money, which is a ways down the road, as well as guidance on building our cash reserves in the rainy day fund and how the money in that fund can be used. So like Rod said, this is just the first reading at the July board meeting. We will do our second reading, and then we can adopt them.
Any questions from the board on anything covered? I'd like to thank Dr. Sibley for her work, and I know Jordan helped as well. So thank Jordan for his assistance in creating those policies. As, as Dr. Sibley said, I do think it's important that we have these as we improve our financial situation and have, you know, a process to follow going forward. So we don't have to approve anything, so we'll move on. Item O, approve recommendation to keep lunch prices the same for the 2023-2024 school year. Two dollars and eighty cents for elementary, two dollars and ninety cents for Wabash Middle School, Wabash High School, four dollars sixty cents for staff lunches, fifty cents for extra milk, and free breakfast.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
So Mrs. Honeycutt has a process she has to go through to make sure that this, you know, works for the state. And so she's done all that, and she's done her homework. And while the cost of some things has certainly risen, as anyone who's been to the grocery store knows, when she punches all this in, she believes that we can stay status quo for one more year and still be able to offer the free breakfast, and, and we'll be just fine. So I would recommend that you approve this, and, and we keep lunch prices where they're at for one more school year. Then she probably will have to raise them a little bit the next year.
Did we not have an audit a year or two ago where they questioned how we were raising that and how frequently?
She had went like five years without raising prices. So she does understand that she's probably going to have to raise them every other year.
So holding them steady, we're not going to run into any issues?
Not by doing that for one year, right? That, when we got, we didn't get in trouble, but we, we kind of did because we had to jump prices a whole bunch. We had not raised prices in five years that time. So, so she, yeah, she knows we're going to have to raise them at least a little bit next year.
Are the staff lunches, do they get a lot more food for that much more of a price?
Not really, but we don't get reimbursed from the state for staff lunches like we do for the kids.
I see.
Yeah.
Have, we had some sourcing issues supplied changes.
We have.
Like everybody has.
And, and now those have kind of gone away, but the price of stuff has gone up. Like she gave me an example today of something that a year ago cost seventeen eighty a carton, and now it's thirty-four dollars. And so we, that's the problem now. It's that the, we're able to get things now. It's just some of the prices are, have gone up a lot, but.
Has the state increased their portion that they reimburse us?
That's a great question. I don't, I'll have, I'll ask her that and find out, but I would assume not. But she, like I said, maybe they have because when she did inform them about we were going to raise prices.
All right. That's helpful to families.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
We had hoped to be bringing a revised calendar to the board meeting tonight that included staff PD days. However, the Indiana Department of Education only took twenty-two of the fifty-five flexibility waivers to the June State Board of Education meeting. We have been told that our waiver will now be on the July board meeting, which is scheduled for July twelfth. This will allow us to bring the revised calendar to our July seventeenth board meeting. This is only about three weeks prior to the start of the school year, but unfortunately, we are at the DOE's mercy. And I do want to remind families that if we get the waiver, our fall break, our Christmas break, and our spring break dates will not change. We started our four ten-hour work weeks two weeks ago. All of our buildings are closed on Friday. We will review our cost savings from doing this over the next couple of months. And I will say that from a morale standpoint, I think that our year-round employees are appreciating the three-day weekends. I had one, one person at central office say, I felt like I got a ton of work done because I was here for ten hours, and I wasn't starting and stopping, and starting and stopping. So, so we'll see. We may continue to do this each year.
Any questions for Dr. Sibley? Not. Items from Chief Business Officer.
I just have one thing, and I, I think it's pretty good news. So when we did our lighting project, we knew there was a good chance we could get a rebate by installing all the LED lights. So as soon as the project ended, I had Mr. Nickum fill out all the paperwork to, to do, that we need to do to get the rebate. And we got a check last Thursday for thirty-nine thousand dollars. So that was just the rebate for installing the lights. So, and we saved four thousand the first month in electricity.
Okay.
So, so far, so good on the, on the lighting project in the middle school.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. Any other questions for Mr. Stone? Items from administrators?
So.
It is. Items from visitors, items from board members. Rhonda?
I don't have anything.
Jason?
Nothing tonight.
The only thing that I have is after our last meeting, I realized I walked out and did not say anything about our graduates. So I'm going to take the opportunity, so tonight. So first, congratulations on being the hundred-and-fiftieth graduating class, a member of the hundred-and-fiftieth graduating class from Wabash High School. You will always be in Apache, and we wish you the very best in all your future endeavors. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.